...to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The record show that all members of the city council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Kerr. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the council reorganization. Item A, receive certification of election. Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the certificate of election of the November 3rd, 2020 general election, as certified by the county clerk, be received and placed on file.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the certificate of election of the November 3rd, 2020 general election, as certified by the county clerk, be received and placed on file. Your vote, please. Billsbuck?
Yes.
Catlin?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Cook?
Yep.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Kerr is absent. McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that is approved, seven zero. Next is the approval of the council member public official bonds.
I move that the following public officials' bonds be received and placed on file. Council members Gary Barnard, State Farm Fire and Casualty Company; Ted Fairbanks, State Farm Fire and Casualty Company; Timothy Frayland, State Farm Fire and Casualty Company; and Richard Kerr, Western Surety Company.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that we receive the official notice of the bonds for the council members that are newly elected. Your vote, please. Mr. Billsbuck?
Yes.
Catlin?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Cook?
Yep.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that is passed, seven zero. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, actually Erin Sadoff, our city clerk, is going to deliver the oath of office to the council members and to any members of the airport authority board that is here tonight. So where you want to do this, Erin?
I just want to line up in front.
Perfect.
I, David Rehman, am sworn in as an attorney of the Constitution of the United States on the Constitution of the United States, and as a fellow member of this court and domestic, I will bear two capable obligations to the name, to advocate this obligation freely, without mental reservation, for the purpose of the amazing, and faithfully and partially victim of abuse, to the state of House to remember, according to law and to the best of my ability. I feel that I swear that I do not advocate or am a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States of this day by force or by law. During each time as I am in this position, I will advocate to become a member of the political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States, for the sake of the law and its cause.
Thank you, Erin. Congratulations to Tim Frayland, Gary Barnard, Ted Fairbanks. Rich Kerr was also newly elected. Rich is absent this evening, so the new council members will take their seats, and we're going to say goodbye to a couple of veteran city council members that have been here a long, long time. And I've got a couple of plaques. It's a token of our appreciation. Petey Catlin has been a member of the city council since 1996. And Phil Cook, since 2012. Prior to that, I think he was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for eight years. So, gentlemen, with our gratitude, we certainly want to present you with a plaque, something to remember your service by.
Thank you. Hey, you can spell my name, right?
That was one person. Catlin?
Thank you, Mayor.
Do that. Enjoyed your service.
Thank you.
Enjoyed working with you. Would you, gentlemen, have anything to say?
Well, I'm going to be the longest I've ever talked up here. Are you ready for this? First off, I need to thank my wife and the boys for letting me do this for twenty-some, twenty-eight years, actually. Eight years on planning and zoning and twenty years on city council altogether. It's been quite a journey. I worked with six different mayors in that time, so nobody ever kicked me off of this, so I guess we're okay. At that same time, I was on sixteen different city, county, regional, and state boards. So that's why I had to thank my wife. There's a lot of times I was not home. I was just out doing things. This all started right after college, and my dad came up and said, "Okay, you're now part of the community. What are you going to do?" So I was with Stan on, we were on Board of Directors for Chamber Commerce, and he didn't have gray hair that time either and stuff. And retail board, I was chairman of that, and so that was all over, and I didn't know what to do, so I asked Mayor Bob. I said, "Well, this will be easy. I'll go up and ask him to be on the tree board or something," you know? And, you know, because I was supposed to do something, and he said, "No, I'm going to put you on planning and zoning." He had no idea what planning and zoning was. I said, "Okay, whatever." It's like, wow, it meets once a month? Okay. But in that time, as eight years on planning and zoning, I was pretty proud. Stan was there. We went through from front to back on the planning and zoning book and brought it up from where to where it is pretty much today. It was twenty years since it had been looked at, so it was quite contentious. Ted can tell you, I'd have to come here every month and tell them why we're changing people's zoning. We weren't allowing chickens. We weren't allowing this and that in the committee. And it was a battle for two years getting this through, because we were changing everybody's zoning and pigeonholing and trying to make things work better. Then I was elected to city council. I've been very proud of what we did at city council. The hiker biker trail, people said would never go. It was a stupid idea. Look at it today. I was actually able, by Mr. Bowers, I'll get, let's get you a trail if you can find a grant for it. So we went with Rhonda Haney, Vertroski, and looked almost every week for a different grant till we finally found one that worked and got it built for the first pound. Now look at it. Anywhere you go, you can get on the hiker biker trail, so it's pretty cool. And any time of the day, there's somebody on the hiker biker trail, too. Tourism-wise, the ball fields now, Main Street, everything seems really good. Industrial Park was nothing more than grass acres out there. It's pretty well full now. What's really been promising about it in the last few years is how much diversification is to it now. It's really neat that we have rare earth salts, Hendrick's Turkey, and now the Tower Company coming. It's something entirely different than what it looked like before. And I've seen in the last twenty years, we've brought the community together, too. The mall's not doing their thing only, and these people aren't doing, we're all working together to try to make Beatrice better. We haven't really ever grown the community, which is surprising, but it seems a lot younger, or I'm getting a lot older, one of the two. So at that, the door is closing on this, you know? Out of public service, I'm not going to run for anything again. But with that, tomorrow I'll be looking for new possibilities and see where I can go from there. And Mayor, if there ever is a tree board that you need, somebody, let me know.
And you'll be the first one I call.
And remember, Beatrice will always be my home.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks for everything.
Thanks, Phil.
Mr. Catlin?
Yeah. By now, everybody knows me pretty well, so this is going to be short and sweet. I would like to thank all the citizens of the Fourth Ward who gave me the opportunity to serve them over the past twenty-four years. I truly appreciated all the support that you have given me over all these years. I'd also like to thank all the BPW employees and all the city employees and staff for all their help. It was a pleasure working with you. You made my job so much easier, and thank you very much. Thank you to my reelection team who helped me for all the years that we put our name on a ballot and ran. Thank you for all the hard work and believing in me, for I could not have done all this without you guys. I'd also like to thank my wife, Lorraine, for being so supportive all these years. You are truly the very best. We've been together forty-three years, and for twenty-four years of those, she's been the other half of this operation, this journey that we've been on. And I thank her for everything that she did and does. In my twenty-four years of service, I was given the opportunity to work with a total of twenty-four different city council members, four mayors, one police chief, three fire chiefs, three city administrators, three city clerks, and six city attorneys. I made some everlasting friendships that I will cherish forever. We have gone through a lot together, but I truly believe that the best is yet to come for our community. Thank you for the respect, the experience, and the help along the way. Together, we've accomplished so much for our little city. In closing, I would like to leave you, the guys that are sitting in these chairs, a reminder: do not forget the people who gave you their vote, gave you the opportunity for you to be their voices, and I would ask, respectively, that you serve them well. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Catlin. All right. Next item on the agenda is the election of a council president, and I'll accept nominations from the floor.
I nominate Rick Claybaugh for city council president.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Rick Claybaugh as president of the city council. Is there any other nominations?
Yes.
And I would accept a motion to have the nomination cease and that Rick Claybaugh be voted by, voted on by unanimous ballot.
So moved.
Moved by Morgan.
Second.
Seconded by McLean, that the nominations for city council president cease and that the name of Rick Claybaugh be voted on. It says by written ballot. We're just going to go roll call. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Abstained.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes seven zero. I beg your pardon. That passes six zero with one abstention. Congratulations, Mr. Claybaugh.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on November 16th, 2020, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $274,951.44. F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $17,031.21. G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. H, approval of final pay request number four in the amount of $3,790.80 to R.L. Teeman Construction for the Sargent Street Concrete Reconstruction Ridge View to Ashland Project, 2019 project, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item I, award of bid for the Beatrice Lift Station Number Five Generation, I beg your pardon, Generator Edition Project, 2020, to Power Tech in the amount of $206,000, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. J, resolution number 6643, executing the letter of agreement for professional services between the City of Beatrice and Olson and Associates, Inc., to undertake a reservoir inspection project for the two water reservoirs located near Fourth and Grant Street, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, resolution number 6644, executing the engagement letter for commercial appraisal services between the City and Cubert Appraisal Group to provide appraisal services for acquiring the necessary easements for a water main project, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. L, resolution number 6645, executing amendment number four to lottery operator agreement with EHPV Lottery Services LLC, extending the lottery operator agreement to expire on February 28th, 2026. And item M, resolution number 6646, executing the agreement renewal to maintenance agreement number four with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the period of January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021. Is there any item that any member wants removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Fairbanks?
Item J.
Item J? Anybody else? Anyone from the public? All right. Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda, with the exception of item J, be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Morgan, seconded by, I beg your pardon, moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda, with the exception of item A, be approved. Your vote, please. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes seven zero. Mr. Claybaugh, item J?
I move that item J, resolution number 6643, executing the letter agreement for professional services between City and Olson Associates, Inc., to undertake a reservoir inspection project for the two water reservoirs located near Fourth and Grant Streets, as recommended by the Board of Public Works, be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Moved by Claybaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Fairbanks, that we further discuss resolution number 6643. Ted, the floor is yours.
I don't have any, I don't have a problem with it, and I'm not going against it. I, and I, as I read through it, I just have a problem with it. I thought we had just, the only question I have is, I thought we had just done this like a year ago.
No, we inspect those reservoirs every five years.
No. Okay. And I didn't see that in the agreement. It was, when it was last done, when it, I just didn't know. And I, and I could have bet you hard money it was like.
I'd have taken that bet. Guess that was down there.
Yeah, I'm in it, too. When they, for them, when they grade it, if you get an opportunity, I don't like being underdone, but if you get an opportunity, you know that it's good. Thank you. I don't have a problem.
That'll come sooner than I want it.
Time flies.
All right. With that said, your vote, please, on resolution number 6643. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes seven zero. Resolution number 6643 has been passed and adopted. Public?
That was actually item J.
Yeah.
What did I say?
Forty-three.
You just got ahead of yourself, that's all.
It was actually...
Item J from the consent agenda.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it was a resolution. Resolution number 6643. Right.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry. My mistake.
No, no problem. That's one.
I know.
All right. Item three has been canceled. Going to item four, resolution number 6647, executing the agreement with Hannah Kealan and Associates for professional services to conduct a BLITE substandard determination study and general redevelopment plan for the redevelopment area number two.
I move that resolution number 6647 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that resolution number 6647 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So we've done a BLITE and substandard determination in the downtown before. We did one in 1999. We did it again in 2005. While BLITE studies don't ever go bad, the State Department of Economic Development wants you to renew them every ten years if you're going to use them as part of your grant applications. This last year, we used it as part of our grant application for our downtown revitalization grant and our planning grant in the downtown area, both of which we were unsuccessful on, and both of which they pointed to the fact that our BLITE studies were more than ten years old. And so we've asked then to have Hannah Kealan, who's done all of our other BLITE studies, come back in and conduct the BLITE study yet again. As you saw, it's $9,000. They said it takes sixty days. We're looking at the exact same boundaries as we had before, so there, nothing there changes. So that's why we're doing it and what the proposal is.
Questions? From the public? All right. Your vote, please. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Resolution number 6647 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6648, executing the assumption agreement, assumption of personal guarantee, and assumption of promissory note by and between the City, David A. Cedarburg, and Beth A. Cedarburg, and Yule Sporting Goods LLC, and Philip W. Detbrener, and Karen A. Detbrener, wherein Yule Sporting Goods LLC, and Philip W. Detbrener, and Karen A. Detbrener, agree to assume David A. Cedarburg and Beth A. Cedarburg's current indebtedness to the City, as evidenced by the loan agreement dated December 4th, 2017, as part of the Beatrice Facade Improvement Program.
I move that resolution number 6648 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that resolution number 6648 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So as part of our last downtown revitalization grant that we had, as you recall, we did forgivable loans out to businesses. We had to have some way that in case they took away or ended their facade improvements, we had to be able to repay that money back to the state of Nebraska. The best way we found to do that was by doing forgivable loans, and so that's what we set up here. One of the forgivable loans was for Yule Sporting Goods. They're in the process of selling that, and so we need to be able to transfer that loan agreement over to the new buyers. And at the same time, obviously, they are going to have some bank financing. The bank wants to be in first position, so you have a subordination agreement knocking the city down from first position down to second position as well.
Questions? Anyone from the public want to say anything? All right. Your vote, please. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes seven zero. Resolution number 6648 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6649, executing the business asset purchase agreement and any and all documents necessary between the City of Beatrice, Sanitary Garbage Company, Incorporated, and the estate of Emma T. Von Bush, to acquire the assets of sanitary garbage.
I move that resolution number 6649 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that resolution number 6649 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
To kind of provide a background, sanitary garbage has been the contract, or the company here in the City of Beatrice has been hauling trash, I think, since at least the 1970s, and maybe longer than that, but I know it's at least since then. Their contract is set to expire on March 31st of 2021, and so the City issued an RFP in July of this year. We received one bid, that being for Waste Management or Waste Connections. In August, we sent out, we rebid it, so we sent out again for RFPs in August. That time, we received three bids: Waste Connections, S2 Refuge and Recycling, and they're out of the Fremont area, and then Midwest Refuge and Waste as well. And so at that point, the City then started looking at evaluating the option of the City providing trash hauling services ourselves. We looked at other communities that do this today. We looked at Fairbury does it, Hastings does it, just to name a couple of them. And in that process, we determined it was a viable option for the City to look at hauling trash ourselves. So then we entered into negotiations with sanitary garbage to purchase their assets. And so the contract you have before you tonight is a contract that would buy the assets of sanitary garbage, which includes the building there at Ninth and Codwell, as well as the approximately seven acres of real estate they have around that facade. They have two balers inside the building. There's twelve garbage trucks that come with it, and 667 dumpsters and roll-offs, plus, you know, the tools and equipment and some of that stuff inside the building as well. And so those are all the assets that you would be purchasing. The contract price is $1.4 million. We would look to close April 2nd of 2021, which is a Friday. So sanitary garbage would haul trash on Friday, that April 27th, or April 2nd, we would close, and then the City would look to start hauling trash on Monday, April 5th.
Questions, gentlemen? Gary?
When I first got this information, I have to say that I didn't know much about it. I've heard some things, and I see an administrator made sure that I got the information in good order, and I had about twenty questions. I might not have that many, but I got a few more, but I had all those answered on a weekend, which was kind of above and beyond his job, so I appreciate that. When we look at what the purchase price of this is, I think we all know that we're going to hear about the purchase price of the real estate. I think that's a given. I did my own research on it. If it was an appraisal, it was probably $480,000. I checked at the assistant's office to see what the replacement cost new would be, given how things were. I couldn't quite make it out there. There's a lot of handwritten notes, and it appeared to be over $600,000. I think it's very important that the council and the City try to get the people, the citizens going to be paying for this, to understand how some of this works. And the conversation I have with Tobias, I have been involved in some of these kind of transactions over the years, and the appraisal business and all that. The allocation of the assets, it's important to know, is more on the seller. It don't affect the City one way or another, as far as I know, but it could affect their tax situation. So it would be important, I think, for the people to understand in these kind of purchases, these kind of businesses, that the allocation probably doesn't mean what it might appear to look like, that the overall transaction seems to come together. I was also told, Tobias said, we had, the City had a gentleman, look at the equipment, because I've been asked that question, and value it, and of course, the goodwill and whatever that amounts to. So when the public sees these amounts, it's important, I think, that they understand the total amounts they answer, because the way the seller wanted to structure it doesn't affect anything that I think the City did. And I thought, it looks to me like it's all in order and like it should be, but I just think it's important people know that, because we're talking about a lot of money. I did have one other question. The others, little villages around, I assume we're going to keep those contracts if they let us, if the other little towns want them?
Right. And so sanitary garbage also has contracts with, I believe, three or four other communities around the area. They pick up for a couple more than that. What you see in there is we acquired their, copied their contracts, looked at them. Each one of them requires the village to consent to the assignment, and so that'll be the next step. Now we'll go talk to those communities. If you see in your contract, there is a set price for each one of those. The average price for, in the industry, for buying a contract like that's between three and five times the gross monthly rate. And so each one of those contracts varies, depends upon, one, the size of it, and, two, how long the contract is, it's got a termination clause.
I did see on page two, on the roll-offs, it says that at the closing, we're going to pay another $50 each for the roll-offs. Is that an addition or is that included in the purchase price?
We get a credit for $50 for every roll-off that's out.
Okay.
Because when you, so if Gary orders a roll-off on April 1st, right, sanitary garbage is going to go drop it off, you're going to pay them $75. But on April 5th, you're going to ask the City to come pick it up, and so we'll come pick it up. pick it up. I'm not going to try to collect again from you. We'll get a credit on the purchase price for $50 for us going to services the roll-off after the closing date.
And on the personal property, and I don't assume to know if there'll be a new route system. We had a little visit about that. But the personal property, they're going to give us the routes, so when we take it over, if we're still going to use that system for a short time, or if we move to a different system, then we're going to be, they're going to give us the routes and how they kind of operate us, so however we have to do it, we're going to be a little more set to be up and running?
Yes.
Okay. Environmental thing, having paid for one of those about 30 years ago or so, it says that it's an option, and I suggested that Tobias, I hope that the council would have that done, although it's an option. I think it might be important that we spend money for a lot of things, and I think that's an important one, so I hope the council and you guys could see your way to go with at least the first step or the stage two or whatever. But I think it's important to protect the taxpayers that we have the environmental survey done.
And Gary, if I may just expand there just a minute. The contract does allow the city to have a phase one and a phase two done on the property, obviously at our expense. If anything is found, the contract calls for sanitary garbage to correct it for the first $20,000. If it's more than $20,000, we agree that parties will sit down and renegotiate the contract.
Do we as a council have to do that through another venue or motion, another council meeting, to have that done?
To have the, no. What would happen is we would go get a proposal from various companies to do the environmental study, bring it back to this body for approval, and assuming you guys approve it, hire that company and have them start.
I guess from my perspective, I think that's important, and I think that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Gary. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. Gentlemen, your vote, please. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Resolution number 6649 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to amend section 25-36, and to repeal sections 25-37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the penalties for abatement and removal of, and assessment of abatement caused to remove dead, dying, or structurally weak trees.
I move that said ordinance be given number 20-042, the title thereof be approved and rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 20-042, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Ordinance number 20-042 by number the first time, ordinance number 20-042 by number the second time, and ordinance number 20-042 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 20-042 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that ordinance number 20-042 be passed and approved. Discussion?
So, our current ordinance on dead trees or dying trees on your properties, you can see, took up approximately, I don't know, 10 different code sections. We had to give you notice. You've got six months to go and finally take care of the tree. If anybody's living in Nebraska, you understand it's six months. You've either had a tornado or an ice storm or something else, or both of them at the same time. There's some other requirements in there, as far as having to burn the tree. It wasn't really clear on how you gave notice, and so, what we're proposing here is we get rid of all those code sections, we clean it up, and we make it so it mirrors your weed ordinance. Your weed ordinance lays out very clearly how you give notice. I got to give it to you by personal service or certified mail. If I can't do one of those, I have to either publish it or post your property. You then have a period of time in which to appeal, and it lays out the appeal process. You have a period of time to resolve the problem yourself. If you don't, that gives the city the right to go in and take care of the issue, in this case, the dead tree, and have it removed off your property. It just, it lays out that paper where that process much more clearly than what we currently have, and so, that's what we're proposing. Basically, you just mirror your weed ordinance. You track out weed, you write the word "tree" in. It's still a 30-day notice, and hopefully move things along a little faster. The six months, just sometimes, a lot of times, is just not workable.
All right. Gentlemen, your vote, please. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Ordinance number 20-042 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to add Division 5 to Article 2 of Chapter 24 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the establishment of a franchise fee to be assessed against natural gas companies.
I move that said ordinance be given number 20-043, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 20-043, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, the motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Ordinance number 20-043 by number the first time, ordinance number 20-043 by number the second time, and ordinance number 20-043 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 20-043 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number 20-043 be passed and approved. Tobias?
So, this ordinance and the next one kind of go together, but the long and short of it is, we've been working with Black Hills. Black Hills has been our natural gas provider for a number of years. Their current franchise agreement is set to expire here. They wanted to renew it, and during that conversation of renewal, we had some conversations about the occupation tax that's currently charged, and it's been a question on the city's mind for some time, but what we're having is some of the large customers in town, we're going off and having a different provider, basically be a transporter, just send gas down Black Hills' pipelines, and we were not able to collect our occupation tax on it. And so, instead of having those conversations with Black Hills, we found a way to amend our franchise fee in order to be able to collect some fees from customers who use the service, should be paying but currently aren't. And so, what's before you is add a section to our city code, and what it would do is impose a franchise fee. It's the same 5% occupation tax that Black Hills pays today. That part doesn't change for them at all. What it does do is it adds a per-therm cost, and so, those companies that just have transportation, just send the gas down Black Hills' pipelines, will now be charged a per-therm cost, which if you do the math, comes out to be roughly 5% if you try to make it so they're equal apples to apples. And so, that's really the change you have before you tonight, is adding that per-therm cost in there, so you can pick up those additional users that you should be collecting from the day, just you don't have a mechanism to do it. Other than that, Brandy, did I leave anything out?
No. We covered it very well. Thank you.
Comes to about $13,000 a year.
What we're anticipating is about $13,000 a year, correct?
Any other questions, gentlemen? All right. Your vote, please. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
Kerr? I beg your pardon. McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Get the right ordinance number.
043.
And ordinance number 20-043 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance 20-44. That is an ordinance regarding Black Hills Gas Distribution LLC doing business as Black Hills Energy and Natural Gas Franchise, and the authority to construct, operate, maintain, and extend a natural gas distribution plant and system, and granting the right to use the streets, alleys, and other public places within the present or future corporate limits of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number 20-044, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that the ordinance be given number 20-044, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Ordinance number 20-044 by number the first time, ordinance number 20-044 by number the second time, and ordinance number 0-44 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 20-044 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number 20-044 be passed and approved. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen?
Again, it's a 10-year contract, it has three five-year extensions at the end of it, that essentially automatically kick in unless one part of the other says something and takes some action in which to terminate it. It's a non-exclusive contract, so you can't, you do allow other vendors to come in, but it really helps Black Hills know that they can start putting some more investments in your community. They've been great to work with. Again, I'd ask Brandy if she has anything she'd like to say.
No. I would just offer that we've been a partner in the community for a long time. The franchise agreements are important for us. They provide certainty, and we need that as we continue to look at significant investments in the community. And then, I would just introduce Becky Whitehead. She's with me today. She's our brand new supervisor here in the area, so she'll be in the office there. She's not new to the company by any means, or the community, just new to the role. So, we're glad to have her in that. I know that there's a lot going on, and we appreciate the partnership here in Beatrice. And I would also commend Tobias, who's been great to work with. I work with communities all over the state, and he's an absolutely professional. So, if you have any questions, we'll happy to answer those.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Barnard?
When the, I assume is correct that when they have to dig and tear up streets and stuff, that they have to pay to put all that back?
Yes. It's part of the agreement. It's part of our natural city codes that we already have, and Black Hills has been very good at it. Not only do they take care of things that they dig up today, they take care of things that they dug up many years ago, and we just found today. And so, they've been wonderful to work out with. Yes, they do have to, you know, if you tear up a street, you put it back in sidewalks and all that stuff.
Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. Mr. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Ordinance number 20-044 has been passed and approved. Thank you, ladies, for being here. Next is an ordinance approving the plat of the Van's Waterproofing Subdivision to Gage County.
I move that said ordinance be given number 20-045, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number 20-045, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Ordinance number 20-045 by number the first time, ordinance number 20-045 by number the second time, and ordinance number 020045 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 20-05 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that ordinance number 20-045 be passed and approved.
From the map, you can see that what we're talking about is just, it's south side of town, Highway 77. You see the South Booster Station and West Locust Road there. This property owned by Sean Van Lanningham. He's looking to sell it. In order to do so, he had to plot it into two separate lots, and so, that's the plat you see before you tonight, is plotting it into those two lots. Planning and zoning recommended, approval of it tonight. It's not, it does not need to be rezoned. It's already general industrial. Outside of that, unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions, gentlemen? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Fairbanks?
Yes.
Frayland?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
And Morgan?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Ordinance number 20-045 has been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance to close and vacate a portion of that certain alleyway located in the Spencer Place addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number 20-046, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number 20-046, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. Barnard?
Yes.
Billsbuck?
Yes.
Claybaugh?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty dash zero four six by number the first time, ordinance number twenty dash zero four six by number the second time, and ordinance number twenty dash zero four six by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty dash zero four six be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance number twenty dash zero four six be passed and approved.
All right, so we have a map out here for you, and if you're not quite sure what you're looking at yet, Lake Ladue's to the north, so it's up on top. Then you have two circles there. You have Aiden Circle and Arden Circle, or something along those lines. There are two A circles. I can't remember the names of them are exactly. Uh, but you see the little red area there? That's the area that we're asking to vacate tonight. Uh, as you can see, to the west of there, you've already vacated the rest of that alley. You vacated the alley, the half of the alley to the north of it. Um, so the gentleman who owns the parcels in blue there came to the city, asked about acquiring the red portion there. Uh, so the next three items on your agenda would be to vacate, uh, what's in red there, and then to transfer it to that property owner for $400, and we will also retain a utility easement over the entire parcel as well.
All right, seeing none. Your vote, please. Barnard.
Yes.
Billsbuck.
Yes.
Claybaugh.
Yes.
Fairbanks.
Yes.
Fraylon.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
And Morgan.
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Ordinance number twenty dash zero four six has been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city to James L. Franz.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty dash zero four seven. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that the ordinance be given number twenty dash zero four seven. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Mr. Barnard.
Yes.
Billsbuck.
Yes.
Claybaugh.
Yes.
Fairbanks.
Yes.
Fraylon.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
And Morgan.
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Ordinance number twenty dash zero four seven by number the first time, ordinance number twenty dash zero four seven by number the second time, and ordinance number twenty dash zero four seven by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty dash zero four seven be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance number twenty dash zero four seven be passed and approved. Any further discussion?
I just note for the new guys, the first ordinance vacates it, the second ordinance authorizes you to sell it, and the third resolution actually authorizes you to sign the contract to sell it.
Three different times.
(laughing)
That means we mean it.
That's right.
Any discussion? All right, your vote, please, Mr. Barnard.
Yes.
Billsbuck.
Yes.
Claybaugh.
Yes.
Fairbanks.
Yes.
Fraylon.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
And Morgan.
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Ordinance number twenty dash zero four seven has been passed and approved. Next is resolution number sixty-six fifty, executing a contract for sale of real estate to James L. Franz.
I move that resolution number sixty-six fifty be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that resolution number sixty-six fifty be passed and adopted. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none. Barnard.
Yes.
Billsbuck.
Yes.
Claybaugh.
Yes.
Fairbanks.
Yes.
Fraylon.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
And Morgan.
Yes.
That passes seven zero. Resolution number sixty-six fifty has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anything for the consent agenda?
Public forum.
Uh, big, I'm sorry, you're, the public forum.
Mayor, we do have, uh, a number of people who are on our Zoom. I would just tell them if anybody wishes to talk, to either send a chat or to let me know, they're all muted, and then we'll unmute them to give them an opportunity.
All right, is there anybody from the general public who has anything for the public forum tonight?
I do have one here. All right, we're gonna start with Ashley. I just gotta figure out how to unmute her.
What's this?
That's mine.
Oh.
I got to ask myself to unmute her.
Oh, wait a minute, do that again. The mic was here.
All right, Ashley, are you there? I gotta mute myself there.
Yeah.
Are you there, Ashley?
All right, I muted her again. I'm working on Ashley.
Should have had your kid here as well.
Yeah. Wait a minute, I figured out how the microphone works.
Well, someone figured out the microphone loud.
All right, let's try this. Trying to do it on both my phone and on my laptop at the same time. All right, Ashley, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
We got you.
I can't hear you, so if you're talking.
Uh, well, I'll try that. If I unmute myself. All right, if I talk though, you're gonna have feedback.
I can hear you now. Okay, I'm just gonna start, and I'll look for the message if you tell me to stop. Does that sound fair?
Perfect.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me.
Okay. I just wanna thank the city council for your time tonight, um, and as well as making the modifications for those who do not wear masks. My name is Ashley Mason, and I would like to speak tonight about the mask mandate passed by the health board that was appointed by you, the city council, on November seventeenth. Uh, they passed the mask mandate. Since I've been unable to read the actual minutes from the November seventeenth meeting, and because they have not been posted to the city website, I am taking this information, um, about the mandate and the understanding that I have from the biased media reports and the health board members, which I was able to speak to personally. The mandate itself has no medical exemptions. This violates the ADA face mask policies. I'm going to read directly from the ADA website so that you can verify that on your guys' own time. The state and local health board mandates do not override the consideration of reasonable modifications required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. If a person with a disability is not able to wear a face mask, and state and local government agencies and businesses must consider reasonable modifications to a face mask policy so that the person with the disability can participate in or benefit from the programs offered or goods and services that are provided. A reasonable modification means changing policies, practices, and procedures if needed to provide goods, services, facilities, privileges, advantages, or accommodations to an individual with a disability. So just to be clear here, examples of a person with a disability who may not be able to wear a face mask are individuals with asthma, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, or other respiratory disabilities. The CDC also states that anyone, anyone who has trouble breathing should not wear a face mask. People with post-traumatic stress disorder, severe anxiety, or claustrophobia may feel afraid or terrified when wearing a face mask. These individuals may not be able to stay calm or function when wearing a face mask. Some people with autism are sensitive to touch and texture. Covering the nose and mouth with fabric can cause sensory overload, feeling to panic and extreme anxiety. The ADA includes other people with disabilities on their website. I encourage you to look into this. Let me get to my next page. The Center for Disease and Control and Prevention recommends wearing a face mask in public places when staying six feet away is difficult. There are three reasons under the ADA that a state or local government agency or a private business may not have to provide a reasonable modification. The first is a fundamental alteration. A state or local government agency or private business may not have to provide a reasonable modification if the modification would change the nature of the service. There are examples on the ADA's website. Undue burden regarding finance. Again, look to this ADA's website for examples of undue burden. The decision-maker must provide information in writing with the reasons why the modification is an undue burden to the city or private businesses. The last one of those is a direct threat. A direct threat is a significant risk to the health or safety of others that cannot be eliminated by a modification of the policies, practices, or procedures, or by the provision of auxiliary aids or services. The determination that a person poses a direct threat to the health or safety of others may not be based on generalization or stereotypes about the effects of a particular disability. It must be based on an individual assessment that considers the particular activity and the actual abilities and disabilities of individuals. During a pandemic, state and local government agencies and businesses should only use the most up-to-date information from the Center for Disease and Control and Prevention, the U.S. Department of Labor and Occupational Safety and Health Administration, in combination when making these decisions. However, these boards must ensure that their safety requirements aren't based on real specific risks, not on speculations, stereotypes, or generalizations about individuals with disabilities. These safety requirements must be consistent with the ADA regulations about direct threat and legitimate safety requirements, and consistent with advice from the CDC and public health authorities. Let me just, oh, I got that one. Okay, so as the COVID nineteen pandemic continues, state and local government agencies and private businesses must make reasonable modifications to allow people with disabilities to access the goods and services they offer. These recommendations, or in this case, the mask mandate passed by the health board, must continually be reevaluated, reevaluated, evaluated with each new CDC recommendation. So if the mandate has an expiration date, but the CDC updates their recommendations before the expiration of the health board's mandate, they must meet immediately to reexamine the mandate and to come up with new recommendations. It is universally accepted that face masks, universally accepted by the CDC and the ADA and the World Health Organization, that face masks are a medical device. This is because the CDC claims that masks prevent the spread of a virus. Since a mask is a medical device, then individuals must be allowed to refuse the use of it. The Patient Act HR three four nine allows for refusal of the medical devices and procedures. This is in addition to the Tenth Amendment of our Constitution. The health board does not, even during the pandemic, have the right to enforce a medical device or a medical procedure on anyone because the health board is not medical professionals. Our health board does have one medical professional, Dr. Paul Meyer. If he wishes to become the private medical provider for the entire city of Beatrice in excess of 12,000 people, he would need to sign the appropriate paperwork with each and every one of those citizens. His appointment to the board is not medical consent from individual private citizens. I pose this question to the city council. Is the health board bound to the same constitutional oaths as each city council member? If so, they have broken the supremacy clause two, Article Six, and the First Amendment, as well as the Fourth Amendment. The Constitution stands no matter the pandemic standing in the country, the state, or the local city level. I urge you, health board members who are in the city council today, to reconsider your mandate that has no medical exemptions, has no alternatives, but a fine and a citation. Thank you for your time.
Does she have a last name and an address?
Um, hold on here.
Mason was the last name. I didn't give her address.
Is that Ashley Mason, is that right?
Mason.
If she was here, she'd have to give her name and her address.
I'm working on it.
He's texting her right now.
Have to allow myself to unmute. So, yeah, let's see if I can do it that way.
That'll work, won't it?
It will, but it's got a lot of feedback. So I have to ask myself, unmute. Okay, Ashley, uh, we do need an address for you. Oh, can you just chat it to me? That'd be great. If you just want to send it to me in the chat, we'll take it that way. Um, the next one I have is Mr. Fanning, um, E L U, uh, from UNL. I will work on getting you here. Figure out how to do this. All right, are you, are you there?
Did anyone hear me? Hi.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you. Okay, I have some, thank you. Uh, I, I too would like to thank the, uh, the council for its time, and I would also like to speak about one particular aspect of the mask mandate. Uh, I'd like to point out that, um, well, I do live in Beatrice, so don't let my email have to fool you, but, um, I attend church every Sunday in Beatrice, and I am a former pastor. When the mask mandate was created, it was created quickly and with little public fanfare. And when the mandate was announced, we were told it applied in all public buildings. The mandate, as it was announced on the city's Facebook page, did not specify any exemptions for religious services or houses of worship. I assume that means that there are no religious exemptions to the mandate. If so, the mandate violates the spirit, if not the letter, of our First Amendment rights to the free exercise of religion for a number of reasons. Number one, being required to wear a mask in church interferes with our ability to freely exercise our religion by giving our finest praises to God. For many of us, worship is a sacred time in our weekly routine. It's not just a habit, but a special time when we come into the presence of our God to adore Him and to ponder deep, meaningful questions of life. Part of that time involves thanking and praising God out loud in word and in song for His blessings. A mask stifles the voice and the heart of a worshiper and prevents us from giving God the kind of worship we believe He deserves. I can't give my best praise to God when I'm breathing my own hot breath, when my glasses are fogging up, and when I have to struggle to hear everyone else around me trying to sing and pray as well. Which brings me to the second reason. Being required to wear a mask in church interferes with the connection we feel with our fellow worshippers as we sing and pray together. And for many people in the community, especially the elderly, interfering with their worship habits only adds more stress to an already depressing and bleak situation. Everyone is worried about the physical effects of COVID, even though it is by and large not fatal. But few people seem concerned about the emotional and psychological effects of dealing with COVID precautions. Constant masking and social distancing makes the elderly, our loneliest citizens, feel even more alone and cut off from the people they love. And while the mask mandate may have been well-intentioned, we're doing irreparable harm to the very population we're trying to protect when we force them to wear masks in a house of God, the one place where they find stability, security, and comfort in a chaotic situation. Thirdly, a requirement to wear a mask in church makes it illegal to receive communion in a public worship service because we have to remove our masks to do so. Those of us in denominations that regularly practice holy communion can face fines of $500 and jail time every time we take part in a sacrament that is central to our faith. So if you are Catholic, Lutheran, or belong to any church that practices some form of holy communion, taking that bite of bread and that sip of wine in church make you a criminal. Now, many churches have been taking COVID precautions for nearly a year now. The church I attend has enough space to allow families to socially distance from each other without having to wear masks. Pastors in my denomination have been working hard to serve the spiritual needs of their people without creating excessive risk of spreading COVID. Even before any mask mandate, many churches were taking reasonable precautions so they could worship safely without masks. It does not take a government mandate to get concerned members of a church family to look out for each other. Therefore, if there is any kind of mandate, there must be some kind of religious exemption. First colonists came to this continent because they believed a person's relationship with God was sacred and off-limits to the government. That principle was written into the Bill of Rights of our Constitution over 200 years ago. Seventy-nine years ago today, my grandparents' generation went to war to preserve our way of life and to protect our rights, including religious rights, from Nazi fascism and Japanese imperialism. How sad it will be if the communities that our grandparents fought to protect allow their own government to take away those rights and make Christians into criminals who have to worship in secret as they did in Rome two thousand years ago. Thank you.
Got a first name?
Can we get your first name?
Your first name, your first name? Yes, Paul.
Paul.
And do you have an address?
I sent him a chat to send it to me.
Okay.
All right. Work on getting the next one here. All right. All right, we're trying to get to Kayla Brewer. Kayla, I'm trying to get you unmuted so you can talk. Doesn't work, does it?
Not very well.
No, not very well. Let's just do this, whatever, but just turn this off. Here's your line from here. Do that. Kayla, are you there?
I am, but Hal and was the one that wanted to speak, not me.
Well, I had you down as you wanted to speak, but all right, we'll go to Hal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kayla. Hal, are you there? Hal, I can see you, but I can't hear you. Hal, I see you, but I don't hear you. The other one I saw that wanted to talk were Crystal and Matt. Crystal and Matt ready to speak? I'm trying.
No pressure.
I know, no pressure, just holding up the whole meeting as I try to figure this out.
Haven't had supper yet. Don't let that bother you.
All right, I'm gonna claim the host. All right, Hal, we still have you muted. Can I, I can't get you unmuted here. I'm trying. I'm trying, Hal. Are you still muted, Hal? You are. All right. I don't know. Everybody is muted, and I can't get them unmuted, although I claimed the host. Let me try this, see if I can get this to work.
Can you hear me out?
Hal? Hal, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
A lot of feedback.
I know, and you left.
It's a little laggy. Give me a second. Is that better?
Yes, it's gonna take me six weeks to talk. Yes.
I just wanted to thank the city council for the time, and I just wanted to inform everyone of kind of how the recent mask mandate has affected me and my family in general. Since the mandate has gone into effect on 11/17 of this year, it has affected us greatly. With this current mandate with no exemptions, which is unlike any of the others in the state, it has really isolated our family and caused great anxiety. Before this mandate, we would spend at least two nights a week out in the town, whether it be bowling at the new bowling alley, the family social. We've gone, we went to the movies, and we've eaten out, and even just spent time shopping at the Blue Bulldog for Christmas gifts. All this, right now, is something we can't do. Everything we have that we've needed for Christmas shopping, we've had to do online, and we've been unable to support our local community with, you know, funds and supporting them and keeping them open because recently some have closed. Let me see. I believe that the mask mandate is unjust, and it punishes everyone for just trying to live their lives in a free nation under God. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Hal. That was, everybody had listed that wanted to speak, so unless there was something else, I think that's everybody at home. What was Hal's name? Um, great question. Hal, what was your name again? I got Hal M. If you want to at least chat it to me, that'd be wonderful.
Okay.
I got it.
Tell me when you're ready because you're up next.
Yeah, I'm ready.
So I asked Tobias, and he gave the report to the Board of Public Works this past Wednesday, or last Wednesday, regarding our electric contract with NPPD and now with EAP, or, yeah, EAP.
AEP.
AEP, it's one of those. And there were some statistics that he gave that told us that the savings is a little more than we actually had anticipated. And so Tobias, with that, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, just to update everybody where we're at today when it comes to our electrical suppliers. So today, we are a 40% NPPD customer. We also have contracts with AEP, NextEra, and WAPA to provide energy. We have a contract with LES to also provide us with some capacity. So that's where we're at today. January 1 of '21, so just a couple days from now, you become a 10% NPPD customer, and you still have contracts with AEP, NextEra, WAPA, and LES. When we were, if you recall, the decision was made clear back in 2015, 2016, as we got closer, we made our final estimates based upon the 2018 NPPD rates, because those are the ones we had at the time, so those are the ones we can make the final estimates on. And all of these numbers are without the cottonwood wind farm, so these are just our energy suppliers. In 2019, so that calendar year, we estimated that we would save 3.4%. Again, based upon the 2018 NPPD rates, we actually saved 10 and 1/2% based upon the NPPD 2018 rates. In 2019, NPPD changed their rates, right? They lowered them a little bit. They had some additional cash that they paid back to the customers, and we still saved 8% from their 2019 actual rates. This calendar year so far, we had estimated we'd save 13.6% for this calendar year. Based upon the 2018 rates, so trying to compare apples to apples, we've saved 16%. Again, NPPD's changed their rates a little bit. Even with their current rates as of today, we've saved 13 and 1/2%. So things have gone well for us as we've made the exit, which has allowed us not to have to raise rates since January 1 of 2016. So questions anybody has about our electrical suppliers?
Keep it coming.
We'll keep trying.
Thanks, Tobias. I appreciate you doing that.
What's your tipping point, Tobias, that you actually start to reduce the rates? We haven't raised them, obviously, as you say.
We, correct. And what we've used the cash for is you've gone through and you changed all the streetlights, right? Which, if you look at our municipal services, has helped drive down our municipal services, which is a savings for everybody in the community. We've used them to put AMI meters in. We paid for both of those with cash. You've rebuilt substations so far this year, which is, you know, we bought a half-million-dollar transformer using those. So you're gonna see some additional improvements made to those types of facilities. We do have in the budget this year to hire John Krasky, who's coming to do a rate study for us, and I think you'll see a significant change to our rates. Our rates today are based upon NPPD rates, i.e. time of use, on peak, off peak, all those things are in our rates today. I think you'll see, well, that's not what we're charged with AEP and NextEra and all the rest of them. And so I think that'll be the biggest change you see in those types of things.
Answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Tobias. Let's go out to item B, small cell technology.
So this is a drum that the league of municipalities has been beating for a while, is small cell technology. For those of you who don't know what it is, essentially, it's cellphone companies trying to increase the density of their existing networks. So they go into an area where there's a lot of people, and they try to put in some technology to allow them to have a better network in that area. Think of the Haymarket area, Memorial Stadium, places like that where you put a lot of people in one place. And you're like, okay, well, Beatrice, Nebraska, we don't have those areas. We do have one small cell device here in town already. We are starting to see the possibility of these getting rolled out to other communities. We've seen them hit Bellevue and La Vista and some, you know, communities. And largely, what we want to make sure is that we have some rules in place before you have applications show up. Lincoln had to go in and suspend all applications for a while while they got rules established. Bellevue had to do the same thing. They didn't have any way to handle them. They didn't know what to do with them, so they just put a moratorium, said you can't even apply to come here. So we're seeking to kind of put those out there. The big reasons are they want to attach to existing poles, right? So we want to make sure if they do attach to our poles, we know which poles they're attaching to, we can control which ones they do, which ones they don't, that kind of stuff. They want to erect new poles. Well, we want to make sure they're aesthetically pleasing and their location's that we want them to be. You know, the story you always hear is that they went into some community, and they erected a giant steel pole in their downtown, which is a historic district, and it didn't fit the nature of the, you know, the look of the district at all. And I'm sure if that happened, we'd all get some phone calls wanting to know exactly what's going on. So we want to make sure we have some rules in place to address things like that beforehand. Now, the other thing is, is although they talk small cell, some of the devices that they look to put in are the size of a phone booth, and they put them on the right-of-way. Not everybody in the room probably understands what a phone booth is, but most people have a pretty good idea of the size of a phone booth and kind of what we're looking at. And so we want to make sure, again, if they put those on our right-of-way, we have some ability to say where they put them, how they look, some of those things. So the ordinance that we proposed out there, and it's not up for any action tonight, it is established as an application process. I think we're looking for a $250 fee. They have to provide some number of information as they apply. You know, if they're gonna apply, if they're gonna attach to an existing pole, they gotta provide some engineering stamps that says that pole will be able to hold it. They've got to tell us why they need to go in certain locations. So it's got a litany of things they need to tell us. We have 90 days then to review and respond and come back to them. It sets up an annual fee for them if they attach to a pole or if they place something in our right-of-way. We have a number of people who are currently attached to our poles. We have pole attachment agreements with them. We charge them annually, so that's about a new thing there. If their device causes interference or they abandon it, they have to remove it. So it's not something you just can keep up there forever, allowed to maintain. They have to have insurance, and then basically, we place restrictions on where they can locate. So again, we talked about the downtown, but if you look on page 19 of your packet, or of your, of that ordinance, it shows basically a residential neighborhood. If somebody were to put one in a residential neighborhood, we limit where they can put it on your block in the right-of-way. So if you look at that picture, really, you can't put it out the front window. We don't want you to put this pole or this cellphone device right out somebody's bay window. It's pushed off into the corner, so generally not in sight lines. It's things we're trying to avoid. So that's really what we're trying to look at doing with the small cell technology. We want to make sure we're out ahead of things in event something were to happen. We have some rules in place. Some of it's governed by the federal government because you're talking communication devices, but there are some things that are allowed by the local municipalities, and that's what we're trying to, trying to do there.
Questions? This is something that'll come forward to the city council just once the rules have been put together for consideration and possibly approval.
Correct.
Okay. All right, with that said, our next regular city council meeting is going to be on December 21st, and we may or may not have a work session on the 28th. And with that, Mr. Claybaugh, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 8:22 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that we go into executive session at 8:22 for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate. Your vote, please, gentlemen. Barnard. Billsbach.
Yes.
Claybaugh.
Yes.
Fairbanks. Fraylon. McLean.
Yes.
And Morgan.
Yes.
Thanks, Monica. Thanks.